To be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via live stream or on YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the commissioner website. To all participants in the meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. The general public will be able to participate by means of communication equipment. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent Commissioner Gill. Absent Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano. Absent Commissioner Ricardo.
Here.
Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all of those affected and who had lost anyone to COVID-19, let us pause for a moment of silence as we reflect on those who have been lost. Thank you, everyone. To date, we've lost 2,394 people in Essex County. Keep that in mind. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one. The organization meeting of January 6, 2021.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing now, commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Gill to approve the transcript. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Mr. President, for the...
Madam Clerk, I was omitted in that roll call, and just for the record, I'll vote in the affirmative.
I apologize, Mr. Vice President Pumares. Mr. President, for the record, want to recognize that Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Gill has joined the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now, we will move to topics of discussion. Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We will... On our topic of discussion, we have the Essex County Board of Commissioners' mobile app.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. For tonight's topic of discussion, it is my pleasure to announce the release of a new mobile app developed by our office staff. The app is called the Essex County Board of Commissioners' Mobile App, and it will be available for download by Android and iPhone users on Friday, February 26. What we hope to accomplish with this app is to give information about the services Essex County provides. Oftentimes, when people are in need of assistance, they are asked to do legwork and research in getting the answers they need. This new mobile app can be downloaded to your phone or handheld device, and in seconds, with the touch of a button, the user will have easy access to vital information without having to place a phone call or find a computer with internet access. Rest assured, we still have our website. We still have a phone number people can call if they would like to speak to a member of our office staff. Our goal with this new app is to have frequently asked questions available in one place, right on your cellphone. A few examples of the feature available through the app include locations of upcoming food distribution events, registration for the COVID-19 vaccine, registration for the COVID-19 tests, the full agenda for upcoming and past commission board meetings, press releases issued by the board, a live link to watch commissioner meetings and events. Our staff worked really hard in putting this together, and I thank them for their efforts. Here is a quick look at the device, and we will tell you where to get it right after this presentation.
And Mr. President, there's no audio. It's just a visual to show you what it looks like.
Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk.
We could have programmed a little background music.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. It looks pretty user-friendly. And the question everybody's wondering, where can I get this app? Got to have this app. Well, you can get it from the Apple Store or from the Google Store, starting on Friday. So get your version. I'll get mine, and we can all stay in touch. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to the staff for putting this together. I think this is going to be very, very helpful to a lot of constituents, making things a lot easier, information right at their fingertips. And that's what we aim to do, is make it easier to contact and get information about board activities and just activities in general from the county. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. No questions or comments. Let's move to the public comment section. All right. Madam Clerk. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public have the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Contestants, we're giving the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you're calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your caller has received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the callers so that they can state their comment or question and be reminded you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we are accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you will have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer, will begin our session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting on the line to speak on agenda items at this time.
Mr. President, we have no emails to read regarding agenda items at this time.
Did you just say no emails?
Yes. Yeah, no emails for agenda items.
Thank you. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have... We have two.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read Resolution 1 into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the... Vice President, members of commissioners. The first item will be covered by, and actually, both items will be covered by Ms. Brackler.
Thanks, Robert. The 2021 budget that we will be introducing totals $793,315,000, and it carries a tax levy of $437,114,700, which is a 1/2, 1% increase over the 2020 tax levy.
Mark, you also have to do number one, which is the cap bank.
I'm sorry, what's one?
Number one is the cap bank.
Oh, oh. This is a routine procedure we do every year. To the extent we calculate what our allowable tax levy will be under the cap, to the extent we're under that amount, we can bank, if you will, for either of the next two years for usage, the amount that we are under. And typically, that has been the case for many years.
And just to clarify too, Mark, that this is not cash. It's just a paper.
No, no, no. It's just... I don't want to say it's paper money, but it's just quote-unquote banking the unused cap for future use in either of the next two succeeding years if we need to use it.
Thank you. Mr. Polovickio.
I'm going to leave this to Mr. McInerney, executive.
Mr. McInerney, you're up.
Okay, yeah, as far as the cap bank goes, it's, as was said, it's not a cash amount. It's actually an authorization to raise taxes beyond the calculation mandated for the tax levy in any one year. So, again, it's not cash. It just allows us to, authorizes us to go higher than we would have been able to go via the tax calculation. As far as the overall budget goes on introduction, we've had our budget hearing through each department. I don't think there was many changes, although we'll have to see for the budget adopt, is adopted, whether there's any amendments to the budget. But I have nothing, just to say that half a percent increase is hardly a large increase on the county. But I commend the county. It's always good to at least leave a layer of increases in there to help absorb at least some of the contractual collective bargaining increases that we have. Not saying the county couldn't get away without it, but it's certainly... Once you don't raise taxes, even to a small amount, you lose that layer of tax increase. So it's a good move just to do the half a percent. And as we see with the annual financial statement, we're still sitting very good with a healthy cash fund balance for the county. And that's about it as far as the budget and the tax levy cap bank.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. I don't know if anyone else heard. It is hearing and echo. I'm hearing an echo. Is it just me?
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
There's 16 callers on there that has their microphones.
So someone, can we get those callers muted?
I will attempt to have that done.
All of them.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. It's Commissioner Cooper. I agree. We didn't hear that until the callers, more callers started coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could hear the agent.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
I believe that this is the same issue every time. If you have too many folks who are not muted, you'll get the feedback.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to introduce Resolution Number One. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Absent Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's read Resolution Number Two into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson, please explain.
Mr. President, Mr. Ackerman already did that first instead of number one.
Okay.
$793 million and a 5% tax increase.
So, Mr. McInerney, you have nothing else to add, Mr. Polovickio? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I don't know, Robert, it's a point, it's a half a percent, right? We said that increase?
Yeah, 0.5%, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Clerk, do you have to read something into the record after it's introduced? Or is that on second reading?
That's on the second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Ricardo to introduce the resolution. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner...
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Gill. Absent Commissioner Cooper.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's a yes from Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson and Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, for resolutions for listing purposes only, we have none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearing this afternoon?
And Mr. President, we have three.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinance number O-2021-00004 and read it into the record at a later time. Okay. I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00004 open. If there's any member of the public who emailed comments for or against this ordinance, we will read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing. Or if there are any callers in the query, let the record reflect. Madam Clerk, are there any persons wishing to be heard?
All right. I will ask our Public Information Officer, Charlo Malumba, do we have any callers in the queue?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any callers in the queue.
Mr. President, there are none.
So let the record reflect. No comments were received or no callers waiting. Mr. McInerney, any questions or comments?
No, I have no questions on this.
Mr. Polovickio.
No, this is no questions. This was discussed at the prior meeting. It's an increase in salary ranges, but not raises for individuals.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebel and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumaris to close the public hearing on ordinance O dash twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 four. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent, Commissioner Gill. Absent, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaris.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes, Madam Clerk, I think Commissioner Gill is here, I think he might have been trying to get in.
Okay.
Yes, yep, vote is yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the readoption of ordinance number O dash twenty twenty dash zero 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 one four and read it into the record at a later time. I do hereby declare the public hearing on zero dash O dash twenty twenty dash zero 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 one four open. If there's any member of the public who email comments for or against the ordinance, we will read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing, or if there are any callers in the queue. Madam Clerk, or the end clerk.
Charlo Malumba, do we have any callers in the queue?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we do not have any callers in the queue.
This is Elmer Herman, Executive Director of the Essex County Utilities Authority, and I would like to address the Board of Commissioners on this item.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. I'm Elmer Herman, Executive Director of the Essex County Utilities Authority, with a regulatory agency for the collection and disposal of solid waste in the county. This ordinance approves a plan amendment to the Essex County District Solid Waste Management Plan to include a public bid contract between the Utilities Authority and a company by the name of Advanced Enterprises Recycling for disposal of certain solid waste types at the Advanced Enterprises Recycling Facility, say that Remus Avenue, New Jersey. This was a public bid contract conducted by the Utilities Authority. This matter was considered by the Board on November ninth, two thousand twenty, was after public hearing, and it was unanimously approved. It was referred to the, as is the custom, it was referred to the Department of Environmental Protection for review and for certification and for their determination to continue regulatory waste flow control on behalf of the Utilities Authority. The DEP took the position that they, that the public notice that was done on this item back for the hearing on November ninth, which was the customary and the normal notice that we do, the ordinance in itself was, in its entirety, was published, the public hearing was noticed, and in addition, in a secondary public notice a couple of days later, in a timely manner, the, all of the information that you referred to, Mr. President, just before, about the manner in which the public could access the hearing, that could access the meeting, et cetera, all of that was included. Unfortunately, it is the position of the DEP that all of those two items should have been included in one notice, and therefore, they have returned this matter to Essex County, and they have requested that a new notice be generated in conformity to what they've indicated, and that the matter be readopted after public hearing on second reading. We had the assistance, I might say, members of the commissioners, of staff people who assisted us greatly in generating this new notice to take care of all of the items that the DEP wanted, and I would personally thank the clerk, Deborah Davis Ford, and Debbie Marvel, for all the contributions that they gave us to getting this notice in a form that the DEP would be satisfactory with it. In addition, I wanted to thank Mike Palavecchio, who has helped us legally on this, and certainly the Administrator's Office for moving this along, because this is a very important ordinance, as is the companion ordinance that will follow for Essex County and for the Essex County Utilities Authority. So, those are the comments that I would like to make. The, the public bid contract with this company is very cost effective for Essex County and Essex County businesses. It's a five-year, a public bid contract, giving the authority regulatory waste flow control. It, as the low bidder, their bid was, their bid was six million, seven hundred thousand dollars lower than the second bidder. For rail access, and it certainly cuts down on the truck traffic, because it's only, the truck traffic is divided in half, because all of the solid waste is referred out by rail to the disposal facilities in Pennsylvania, in Ohio and in Pennsylvania. Finally, there is a minor amendment that was made to this ordinance for clarification purposes, and that pertained to the solid waste type thirteen C. The DEP wanted us to specifically indicate that the ordinance should be amended to include the transfer transportation and disposal of the construction and demolition waste, which is type thirteen C, thirteen C specifically defined in NJAC seven twenty-six dash two point thirteen G, and that, along with the regular type thirteen, which is bulky waste, and solid waste type thirteen C are separate waste types, but they are both included in this ordinance and in the plan amendment, and we are going to direct both of those types to the Advanced Enterprises Recycling for disposal. I think that covers everything that I had in mind, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. McInerney, any questions, comments?
Director Herman, so, the thirteen and thirteen C is exclusive to the second, or to this contract? It's not in the second one?
No, no, the second one is for type ten, commercial waste.
Right, okay.
This is bulky waste, type thirteen, and it's type thirteen C, which is construction and demolition.
But it also has the vegetation.
Yes, it does, yes, it has, that's type twenty-three, the vegetative waste, which is the non-processable part, and then, that's very small quantities, the main thing is the type thirteen. And then there's a type twenty-seven, which is identified as dry industrial waste, that's like equipment, things like that, non-processable part. If I might add one last thing that I forgot, at the very time that the DEP took this position on the, on these, on the public notice, which was very surprising to us, they did the same thing with Union County, there was a waste food processing facility on the commissioner's agenda in Union, and they suggested to them that they could do what we're doing now, having to do it over, and I think they also had the same problem with another county, but I just don't remember which county it was.
But Director, am I right saying that this contract was already approved, and that this is just the ordinance to amend the solid waste management plan to include it?
No, no, it wasn't, it was approved on November ninth, after public hearing. The DEP has specifically requested that there be a public hearing now, and that there be a readoption on second reading of the ordinance. But the, as I indicated earlier, the purpose of the ordinance is to amend the Essex County District Solid Waste Management Plan to include this public bid contract for a five-year period with this entity known as Advanced Enterprises Recycling. And the key thing for the Essex County Utilities Authority, of course, because of the, the DEP has the final arbiter on regulatory waste flow control, and it's essential for Essex County and for the Utilities Authority that we continue to maintain regulatory waste flow control over all solid waste types. Thank you.
So, this is, this is not only the amendment to the solid waste plan, but a approval of the contract as well?
That's correct.
Changed by the DEP, okay, thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Palavecchio.
No, I think Mr. Herman's covered.
Okay, Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, okay, Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to close the public hearing on ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash zero 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 one four. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance? I got a thumbs up from Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, you're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper. I want to make sure I didn't miss Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaris.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to readoption of ordinance number O twenty twenty dash zero 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 one five and read it into the record at a later time. I do, I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash zero 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 one five open. If there are any members of the public who email comments for or against the ordinance, we will read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing, or if there are any callers in the queue. Madam Clerk.
Charlo Malumba, are there any callers in the queue?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we do not have any callers in the queue.
Mr. President, there are none.
Let the record reflect, there are no comments received or no callers waiting.
This is Elmer Herman. Excuse me.
Mr. Herman, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I would not repeat all of the comments that were just made on the prior ordinance, because this one also came back on the exact same issue, and we did all of the same things, first of all, to get the notice in the proper form that would satisfy the DEP, and we have been requested to ask that the, that the matter be readopted after public hearing on second reading and final passage. This is, again, a public bid contract, it's with waste management, a most reputable company that we've dealt with in Essex County for many, many years, they're over at Julia Street in Elizabeth, it's a five-year contract, and it pertains to commercial type ten, that's the main category, one hundred and fifty thousand tons a year, they're the low bidder, they had, they had the bid for this particular waste type for the last five years, and they won it once again, their price is a very competitive price and very beneficial to Essex County and Essex County businesses, enterprises, restaurants, bars, et cetera, for the removal and the disposal of commercial type waste. It goes from the, it goes to the Julia Street facility in Elizabeth, and then it is shipped to the Fairless landfill in Morrisville, Pennsylvania. So, as the regulatory agency, we are requesting that this ordinance be readopted, and because we feel that is most beneficial for Essex County, as I've indicated, and it will allow us, again, to continue with the regulatory waste flow control that is so important, not only for keeping the prices down in the industry, but to allow us as an authority to continue to pay down our bonded embeddedness. And one last thing, I had thanked the staff people for their help, I thanked Mr. Palavecchio, I want to thank the Administrator's Office for helping us get this matter back on track, and Matt did a great job in assisting us along the way, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. McInerney.
The only question I have here, Mr. Herman, is that, as you described, it's commercial waste type, but it lists number ten type, isn't that municipal household waste?
That's correct, there's two type tens, there's the, there's the household that goes to the Covanta incinerator pursuant to a long-term, pursuant to a long-term government-to-government contract facility owned by the Port Authority, that's for all of the municipalities, that's the residential type ten. This is commercial type ten going to the waste management, which is from the restaurants, the bars, the business enterprises.
So, there's a, there's a distinction within type ten?
Just by the generator, either the house, the residential is one generator throughout the twenty-one, twenty-two counties, twenty-two municipalities in the county, and then the commercial side as a generator for the commercial waste.
The commercial type ten?
Type ten, correct.
Okay, that clears it up, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio.
Nothing to add.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to close the public hearing on ordinance O dash. to close the public hearing on ordinance O dash twenty-twenty dash zero 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 one five. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number one, which is from the Office of the County Administrator. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Walker, our Director of Risk Management, will address this item. Good evening, uh, Commissioner President, Commissioner Board, Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management of the County of Essex. Whereas the County of Essex, through the County Administrator, has a need for a firm to provide insurance broker services relative to the county's property in casualty insurance program, specifically for cyber public officials and Rikers Hill Art Park general liability lines of coverage. Um, the Office of the County Administrator, through the Office of Purchasing, publicly advertised this service under a set-aside program. The county received three vendors, written responses to that RFP, and after evaluation and review of the proposal submitted, the Office of the County Administrator, in conjunction with the Office of County Council and the Office of Risk Management, recommends the appointment of the services to the Massey Agency for a period of three years, running from January one, two thousand twenty-one, to January one, two thousand twenty-four. With us today, I have Ramel Massey and Larry Barnes from the Massey Agency.
Good evening.
Good evening. You want to tell us a little bit about who you are and, and the country?
Yes, yes. Um, good evening, uh, Commissioner President Richardson, Commissioner Vice President Pumares, and other distinguished commissioners. Um, I am Ramel Massey, President of Massey Insurance Agency, proudly located in the County of Essex and City of Newark for the past forty-six years. Massey has a depth of public entity experience. We are one of the few African-American women-owned insurance brokerages in the region. Massey actively seeks-
Uh, 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 just hold on for one second. Can we get these folks muted, the callers? Okay. We didn't lose, uh-
No, no, I'm here.
Okay, excellent. All right. You may continue.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, proudly located in the County of Essex and City of Newark for the past forty-six years, Massey has a depth of public entity experience. We are one of only a few African-American women-owned insurance brokerages in the region. Massey actively seeks to employ those who reside in Essex County, and our staff is over seventy percent county residents. Currently, Massey provides your crime insurance, which we have done since two thousand and ten, and we provide your pollution insurance since two thousand and eleven. We are pleased to have been selected to handle your cyber, public officials EPL, and Riker Hill Art Park coverages going forward. As we know, in two thousand and twenty, the global pandemic created a near-perfect condition for cyber criminals, and we've experienced dramatic spike in cybercrime. The pandemic required the move to remote platforms rapidly with little preparation exposing insufficient information technology infrastructures, immature data governance, and inadequate, inadequate security controls. Due to the current environment, cyber insurance demand has increased while industry losses have climbed. We will work with the county to achieve good cyber hygiene protocols that will help the county to co- control its losses. The public officials employment practices liability coverage, as you know, with organizational downsizing, layoffs and furloughs, the county is under pressure, and this coverage is most important for you to protect yourself. The Riker Hill Art Project, Riker Hill Art Park, um, general liability coverage is important to protect our vibrant artists. I want to thank the, the county for its past support of Massey Insurance Agency. As I mentioned, we have been your broker since two thousand and ten. We look forward to the opportunity to continue to grow this relationship. Because of the county's commitment to work to increase diverse and qualified Essex County businesses, Massey Agency is proud to say that we've been in the county for forty-six years due to your commitment and your foresight to support small women and minority-owned businesses. Thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Mr. Polavecchio?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, not a question about the contract, but just on the face of the resolution, um, it references a, uh, an RFP, uh, with a two thousand and sixteen date. I just, it, is that referring, unless I'm reading it wrong, is that referring to, uh, the, uh, RFP that went out for this, or is that a mis-
No, that's-
That was the crime. I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, this is Tim Walker. That's referencing the original contract that, um, this, this program was under through, uh, Connor Strong and Buckle Lou. They had previously held a three-and-a-half-year contract with the county.
Mr. McInerney?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I have a question. Um, on the memo under the fiscal impact, it says zero.
Yes, that's correct. Again, Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management. It is a zero-dollar contract to the county because, uh, the Massey Agency will be compensated through insurance commissions paid by the insurance company.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, so, Mr. Walker, just to be clear, so there's no cost to the county, correct?
Zero dollar cost to the county, correct.
Excellent, excellent. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I, I have one. I, I'm happy to see you guys get a, uh, a solo contract. Uh, it's, uh, in my opinion, long overdue. And, you know, as more contracts come online, please continue to bid. Uh, we want to see more diversity, uh, in, in these contract awardees as well. So thank you for your service to the county. Thank you for employing seventy percent of your, your, your employees coming from Essex County. We, we really appreciate that. We appreciate your contributions to, to the county and all that you do. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, we will now move to resolution number two, and it is from the Office of the County Council. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, hopefully the Council Gassion is here.
Good evening, Commissioners, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. This is a, um, resolution seeking approval of a, um, additional five thousand dollars added to an already existing contract with the law, law firm of Inglisino, Webster, Waikasala, and Taylor, uh, for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-one, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, this is a, a case that's just about come to its conclusion. It was in order to show cause involving mental health hearings at our hospital center on a discovery issue. Um, the case was essentially concluded last year, uh, but there are just a few outstanding items that need to be resolved by the law firm, hence the additional five thousand dollars to pay their outstanding, uh, legal fees.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumares. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number three, which is from the Division of the Hospital Center. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Delgaudio will address this item. Mr. Delgaudio?
Can you hear me? Can I be heard now?
Yes.
Got it loud and clear. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. President, Frank Delgaudio, Director of the Essex County Hospital Center. Resolution number three is an annual requirement from the state of New Jersey, uh, where the Board of Commissioners provides authorization for us to continue operation of the Essex County Hospital Center. Um, the financial and management plan consists of several components. One is a approved resolution from the board. The other is a, um, it's a financial plan with any capital expenditures reported to the state, any planned expenditures, and also a staffing plan and differences between a calendar year two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
Frank, does this affect the funding source too? Uh, you, you need this in order to get to state funding?
Uh, it's all encompassed in that, but the rates were published last year, and we already have the funding. And we've been, uh, i- it's, you know, more of a formality, but it is a important document. The Division looks for it. Um, and we've been doing this every year.
Okay.
So it doesn't, i- it, you know, if we don't submit it, it would affect the funding, yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions four through six, which are from the Department of Public Works, and read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Antonio will address these items.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number four is a contract award to C T M Bulk Handlers, the sole responsive and responsible bidder, to provide sodium chloride brine solution. This will be a twenty-four-month agreement, an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. As you may know, brine is applied to county roads, uh, prior to major icing and snow events during winter operations in a technical part of our, uh, snow, um, uh, snow, um, combating, uh, in the Department of Rossum Bridges. Item number five is a contract award to Aegis Security, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, to provide security services at Creed Twenty, Creed Twenty-One, University Avenue. This is also a two-year contract, not to exceed two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. Item number six is a contract award to Garden State Highway Products, the sole responsive and responsible bidder, to furnish and deliver a traffic jet printer system. This is an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand and two dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
Just a comment, Mr. President. Each of these, uh, three contracts from the Department of Public Works are either, uh, the lowest responsive, uh, responsive bidder or the sole responsive bidder. So they're being awarded on that basis.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take resolutions four through six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper? Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions seven and eight, which are from the Department of Parks, and read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Zaitz will address these items.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Uh, good evening, Board of Commissioners. Number seven is a twenty-four-month option contract extension with pond and lake connection for the monitoring and chemical control of algae, uh, over various parks. Specifically, uh, this will be for algae control in the Branchbrook Park Lake, the Branchbrook, Branchbrook Park Lagoon, Grover Cleveland Park Pond, Irvington Park Pond, Monty Urban Orange Park Pond, Verona Park Lake, We Quake Lake, and the Orange Reservoir. Uh, in addition to that, there's a fifty thousand dollar allowance, which will be used for various DEP permits that are required, as well as other, um, algae control maintenance issues that may arise. Number eight is a twenty-four-month contract extension with Rotandi and Sons for the operation of the compost facility at the South Mountain Reservation. This is a revenue contract. It totals, uh, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the twenty-four months. In addition to the revenue that the county receives, uh, the county will also receive five thousand cubic yards of double-hammer mulch, a thousand cubic yards of wood chips, and twenty-five hundred cubic yards of mulch, uh, as well as a thousand cubic yards of screened top soil. Uh, specifically, this contract is for the county, as well as other municipalities and private contractors who, uh, do leaf collection and tree trimming, to essentially, uh, dump these, uh, items over at the compost facility, for which it's then composted and turned it to mulch, wood chips, and other substances. Happy to answer. Any questions the board may have.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners?
Mr. President, I-
Mr. President, I have a statement. Last year, we had a problem at Branchbrook Park with the algae. Will awarding this contract help prevent the situation this summer?
Uh, three, Mr. President, Joshua Zates. Uh, yes, certainly, uh, there's a a number of factors that went into the uh the algae over Branchbrook Park. Um, uh optimal weather, natural algae played a huge part, as well as runoff of fertilizer and other such items from uh residential neighborhoods in the area. Um, and certainly thi- this will help alleviate that uh this coming summer.
All right, I hope it really helps because it was a real problem last summer.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. I had a similar question. Uh, and did this company or any other company have a contract to eliminate the algae last year? Was there a contract in place prior to now?
Uh, Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks. Yeah, it was the same company. This is a twenty-four month option. And again, uh, last summer was really an exception with the uh optimal weather conditions for algae, uh and we're we're very optimistic that this summer won't pose similar problems.
So you mean people, it'll be cleaned up and people will be able to fish again?
That is certainly our-
Surrounding parts of Branchbrook Park Lake will will be taken down?
Yeah, it is certainly our our intention that that the algae will be under control this this season.
Thank you, Mrs. Zates.
I I excuse me, before we continue. Uh, John, I have one question with this. We used the same company last year. When did they come on? Was it already a problem when they joined?
So three, you, Mr. Mr. President. Uh, so typically, the timeline is uh around March. They start going out to survey uh what the conditions are, and then between March and the other spring months, they apply for the various D E P permits required to uh control the algae, and then once, once those are approved, they then start uh their actual uh uh service.
Is this what they did last summer?
Uh, three, Mr. President, yes, that's that's the usual timeline.
All right, thanks a lot. Hopefully, it will be better this year.
M- Mr. Zates, one, another question. So the fish and the and the uh wildlife that that's in the lake and frequent the lake, is there any uh harm to the fish that are in the lake from this algae? And if so, what has to happen to rectify that? Does all the fish have to be taken out and restocked? How does that work?
Uh, Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks. Uh, there's no harm to the fish with the algae. Um, the algae is really just an aesthetic uh eyesore, I guess you would say, for lack of a better term, but there's no actual harm to the the uh wildlife. Uh, the same with the chemicals that the company would use. Uh, everything has to be approved by the D E P, and it's safe for for the various wildlife in the area.
Okay, 'cause I I I'm fairly certain that there was a sign or signs out there, multiple signs that said no fishing or don't, or or not to eat uh fish caught.
And and Mr. President, I could add to that. Is this the same situation that they had at Lake Apacón last summer?
Uh, Joshua Zates, I'm uh a freeholder Sebo, I'm not, I'm not really sure what what you're referring to.
They had a real problem at Lake Apacón because of the algae, and the people couldn't go in the water, and it was affecting the fish. And I was wondering if this is a similar situation.
Uh, oh, I can certainly get back to you with uh what those signs were referring to.
As long as it's taken care of.
Mr. President, if I may.
Commissioner Mercado, Vice President.
Pumaras, we'll try that one. I know it's two handsome Latinos on the board, and I know you guys always get confused, and that's okay. I, there's absolutely no shame in being confused with my handsome colleague, Mr. Rokano. Um, I am a little bit familiar with Lake Apacón because I do boat there. I've been there for twenty-five seasons, and part of the algae problem, it was a significant problem up there. It really crushed the economy. It posed a threat to humans with rashes, and it was, there's concern for wildlife. And part of the problem is being addressed through some testing and, of course, monitoring, but they're also doing some wat- the air filtration systems where they basically put uh irrigation system underwater to cause bubbling because part of the issue is stagnancy of the water, which they want to eliminate. And so I think that's part of the equation. And if it persists again, uh, I think, y- you know, this company needs to be prepared to move on to those things. I know that the company that is being used to uh at Lake Apacón uh is Princeton Hydro, which is fairly well-known um firm that deals with these kinds of issues, and it's an ongoing issue. So it's not the first time it's ever happened at Lake Apacón, but I think in light of the uh stormwater runoff that we've had, the more permeated cer- uh surfaces that we have, this all contributes, of course, to uh all of these things. And so I think it's something that warrants a little bit further investigation. I'm not going to oppose the contract by any means, but I think that's something needs to be looked into if this is a consistent problem and not just a once-in-a-while occasion there, because it does have greater impact to the environment, the wildlife, and of course, the people who are uh in contact with the water. I know at Lake Apacón, you couldn't go into the water for fear of getting a rash and having some outbreak, and if people are fishing and they're coming in contact with water, that obviously would be a problem. So I think that, uh, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more response uh and draw a comparison if what we have had experiencing is is similar to what happened at Lake Apacón. And if you can get back to that, I I would, I'd like for you guys to kind of get back to us on that.
Uh, Joshua Zates, Essex County Parks, certainly Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Pumaras. I got it right this time. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolutions Seven and Eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number Nine, which is from the Division of Training and Employment. Please read it into the record at a later time. Uh, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Mossford is here to address this item. Mossford, if you can hear you.
Pardon, I forgot to take the mood off. Good evening. Um, this is Division Director Julius Monford, Essex County Division of Training and Employment. The resolution you have before you tonight is to provide two point five million dollars to allow individuals who are dislocated from their job, which meant they're receiving unemployment, or individuals who may be looking for another opportunity to improve their career training ability, and also for youth who have decided that they wanted to go into a trade field. Individual training contracts are not contracts like work first New Jersey contracts where they're class size contracts that we are allowed to place clients in. Individual training um accounts are contracts that the individual, under federal and state guidelines, must choose themselves. We cannot guide them, we cannot lead them, we can only advise them, but they are con- they are they are, they make those decisions on their own after going out, talking to schools, reviewing schools, having conversations with them. During this time of COVID, they're doing a lot of virtual orientations. Then they come back to the counselor and tell the counselor, this is the school that I want to go to. Now, there are certain, there are certain schools that we have been allowed to say to the individuals that we at Essex County does not contract with this school because their performance with us is bad, although the state still allows that school to be on the approved list. There are about several schools that we put on probation, and we tell clients that we cannot write a contract with them because they have not made certain guidelines under the Essex County standard. Any questions to you, Mr. President?
Mr. McInerney.
Yeah, I was just a little confused about that, Mr. Monford, when you said that, i- did you, or or did you say that the county doesn't enter into these uh contracts?
Say that again, Mr. McInerney.
Uh, I thought I heard you say that the county doesn't enter into these contracts, or not into these contracts. Did I understand?
Do you, Mr. President? Yeah, so what happens is we write a contract with the the vendor is approved by the New Jersey Department of Labor. We write an individual contract for that person individually, not in a group. So if Julius Monford went to Worldwide Educational, we will write a contract with um Worldwide Educational to provide individual training contracts for two years, but we do a separate document for that individual client.
Okay, so everybody is on an individualized basis when we're, when we're dealing with these sub-grantees?
Correct.
Okay. The the other question I had, and I think I brought this up in the another time, uh but it was the wrong contract. I'm wondering if this is the contract where there was a lot of discussions, not only on the training, but on the potential for placement after the training, and uh you know, can you address that? Has that improved?
Uh, yes, all contracts, whether they're class size contracts or individual training cla- individual training contracts, there is a component for placement under these contracts. The I T As are are, have a greater placement rate than the work first New Jersey class size contracts. So we do well at placement uh with the individual training co- training contracts. But we are in talks with the New Jersey Department of Labor now because they established a new compliance group that goes and looks at how well these vendors are doing placement. So oftentimes now, we have to, there's a report card that if they're not doing well, the New Jersey Department of Labor sends us that report card, and they will remove the vendor from their approved list.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, am I mistaken, but w- were these individual contracts running about forty-five hundred dollars or five thousand, somewhere in that range in the past, or was that something?
Yes. Yes, Mr. McInerney. Do you, Mr. President, this is the one where they average about forty-five hundred dollars per person.
Okay, all right, very good. Uh, I I don't have any questions. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Parlevekio.
No questions.
Commissioners.
Mr. President.
Uh, I would like to ask, Mr. Mr. Monford, is airport opportunities still a part of the the contracts?
Do you, Mr. President? Council for Airport Opportunities does not do uh individual training account contracts. Actually, uh, since they had turnover at their, at their top level over the last four years, they haven't done uh many class size contracts or been too much involved in the training process over the last couple of years.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Uh, but Mr. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Mr. Monford, I have one. These um, the trainings that you guys recommend or that are a a part of this, h- h- how many of them are are uh in high demand? Uh, and compared to those that may be a little outdated and is really not a high demand. I understand that it's up to the individual to can uh uh to pick the training that they're interested in and what school they go to, but has there been any changes in terms of the types of trainings that are offered, or is it the same thing that's been offered for five, last five or ten years?
Great question, Mr. President. So one of the requirements of the uh individual training class and the New Jersey Department of Labor is that these po- these training programs have to be reasonable labor demand occupations that have been predicted by the United States Department of Labor and the New Jersey Department of Labor, that these are going to be jobs that are this training will lead to jobs for the future in the next five to ten years. So we are, we are, um, how can I say? We are in compliance by only letting people know that they have to go into a program that leads to a job within the next, it'll be a labor demand occupation over the next five to ten years. Also, the federal government requires us that the job provides them with a certification. If it does not provide them with a standard certification, the federal guidelines, then we won't meet our performance standards with the United States Department of Labor or the New Jersey Department of Labor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that update. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Johnson.
The reason why I asked that question is because over the past, uh, airport opportunities used to get a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred of our clients there for training. But what they were, what was going on is that once our clients had competed, completed the course, then they do a background check on them, because they ch- they, the airport was hiring them, uh the ones after they finished the training. And about eighty-five to ninety percent of ours got kicked back because after they finished the training is when they did the the background check. And then when they did the background check on them, they found out that they had something on their record, and they didn't employ them. And the reason why I say that is because I I, if they were still on our list, I wanted to ask if they are, are they now taking it and giving that background check before they enroll these students into that training program? Because that's wasted money, one, and it's a wasted time and energy of that young man or young woman.
Do you, Mr. President? Council for Airport, uh Commissioner Johnson, was in, uh, ten, fifteen years ago, they were one of the major um co- contracted vendors involved with class size contracts for work first New Jersey clients. Council for Airport Opportunity now is not a major player anymore um in this, in this industry. Uh, they have not put in for a contract over the last past six years, so I think they've gone another route and just be a dot there now, a direct job placement instead of being a trainer in the street.
Thank you, Mr. Monford.
No problem, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners. From Commissioner Vice President Pumaras and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Good evening, thank you.
Take care. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number Ten, which is from the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. We'll read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh Deputy Director Richardson Green will address this item.
Uh, good evening, Commissioner President Richardson and Distinguished Board of Commissioners. Uh, Valentina Richardson Green, Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, uh regarding a resolution for a contract with Hudson Community Enterprise to provide inventory storage and access to records for five months. Uh, since our move from eighteen Rector Street to our our new location at three twenty-three twenty-one University Avenue, we needed to uh utilize an additional storage area. H C E has been providing that storage and inventory for us. Uh, during these five months, we'll be able to retrieve all of our records from that off-site facility and have them stored at our own internal storage facility. Thank you.
Mr. Parlevekio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion for Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, so you doing a- Commissioner Gill, so you doing a thumbs up like I had to one meeting, but we got you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions eleven and twelve, which are from the Division of Community Action. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Uh, please be reminded, we will conduct a public comment session, non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. Clerk can give you and give them the call-in information. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. President, the call-in number is eight five five seven five six seven five two zero and use the password seven one one three seven pound. I repeat, the call-in number is eight five five seven five six seven five two zero and the passcode is seven one one three seven pound.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. McCoy is going to address items eleven and twelve.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Terrence McCoy. I'm with the Division of Community Action and I'm coming before you with Resolution Number eleven for approval of five contracts with, uh, five of our nonprofit agencies to provide sheltering during our Code Blue declaration periods for the homeless individuals and families that are out on the street homeless and when it's extremely cold to get them out of the elements of the cold weather. And number twelve is, uh, our governmental agency agreement with the city of Newark, who will also be involved with the Code Blue to handle the greater Newark area that will be providing outreach to go to bridges and, uh, pack the, uh, Penn Station to provide, uh, security to get these, aid these people out of the station and from under bridges and into shelters in the city of Newark with their, uh, provided shelters.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take Resolutions eleven and twelve as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution thirteen, which is from the Division of Senior Services and we will read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Smith will address the site.
Um, thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. Um, good evening, Mr. President. Um, Vice President, Board of, Board of Commissioners, Madam Clerk. My name is Eric Smith. I'm the Senior Data Processing Programmer for Senior Services and I have item number thirteen, which is for, or a request of approval of the two thousand twenty-one Matrix of Self-Contracts for various agencies to provide services to the seniors of Essex County and amount not to exceed eleven million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions fourteen and fifteen, which are from the Office of the Sheriff. Read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, I'll handle these two. Number fourteen, uh, is a contract award to Atlantic Tactical by Winchester Ammunition for the Sheriff's Office. Amount not to exceed thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents. This is for, uh, nine millimeter and rifle ammo under state, uh, contract. The vendor is in compliance with the, with the Board's two thousand fifteen, uh, Responsibility Orders. Item fifteen is a contract with, uh, Triple A Facility Solutions, the lowest and responsive, most responsive and responsible bidder. Provide janitorial services for the Sheriff's Office at its patrol headquarters in the OEM building. It's a contract from March first, twenty twenty-one to March, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand dollars. Uh, it's a seven-day service, Monday through Friday, four hours, and Saturday and Sunday, two hours per day. And OEM is a five-day service, two hours per day.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebel and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumares to take Resolutions fourteen and fifteen as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay. Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution sixteen, which is from the Office of Purchasing. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Corporation Council Gassion will address this item.
Good evening again, um, Commissioners. Uh, Mr. President, uh, item number sixteen, uh, sorry, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, is a lease amended, amendment for the property located at sixty Evergreen Place in East Orange. Uh, we had come before, uh, the Commissioners back in twenty nineteen for a, a new lease on this property. Um, at that time, we had entered into a, a five-year agreement with the property owner. Uh, we are now looking to amend that lease, um, specifically after the twenty nineteen lease extension was entered into. There were several items, um, that were identified that needed to be, uh, updated and rehabilitated within the property itself. Um, just as a side note, uh, the county does not physically occupy this space. We actually, um, subleased the space to, uh, to the state of New Jersey for their, uh, probation department. Um, so as a result of several items that the state brought to our attention that needed to be updated, we entered into negotiations with the landlord to update the property accordingly, uh, and in, in compliance with the specifications that the state of New Jersey had laid out for us. Um, so since that time, the landlord has undertaken those updates. Um, the, they have met with the satisfaction of both the state and the county of Essex. Um, and in addition to those items, we are actually increasing the amount of space we are leasing, um, from the landlord, uh, and we are also, uh, we are also, um, re, um, renegotiated the, the length of the lease. Uh, it is now a fifteen-year lease, uh, with one five-year extension, which will go back to the original July fifteenth, twenty nineteen renewal date. Um, there is, uh, also a lease and rider that had been originally approved by the board, uh, that's incorporated as part of, um, this new lease amendment. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Palavecchio?
Uh, I do have one question. Is the county obligated to provide physical space for probation similar to the way it is, uh, required to provide space to the Superior Court?
They are, yes.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, yes, question?
Commissioner Cooper?
Um, did you say that this lease agreement is being extended, the time period?
So the original, I'm, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. President, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. Um, the, in July twenty nineteen, we entered into a five-year lease agreement, um, which, which had three five-year options associated with it. So the total amount of the time of the lease is, is not being, uh, actually extended. It's just a, um, a revision on how the lease is, it can get extended. It is now a fifteen-year straight lease with one five-year extension. So it's still twenty years, but it's a straight fifteen as opposed to an initial, uh, period of five years, which was the original lease extension back in twenty nineteen.
So I want to make sure that I, I understand what you're saying. Initially, this was a, uh, uh, a lease that we had entered into for a five-year period with the option to renew it for two additional five-year terms. Now we're removing those two additional five-year terms and making it a straight fifteen-year lease?
It, it was actually, again, through you, Mr. President, it was an initial five-year term with three five-year options. So that's five years with an additional fifteen years broken up, uh, amongst, amongst three extensions. Um, and this current amendment is a straight fifteen years upfront. No, no extension options in that fifteen years. It's a straight fifteen and then one five-year extension at the conclusion of that fifteen years. Still twenty years on, in both, uh, scenarios.
So it's a straight fifteen years, no, the five-year intervals, I'll, I'll call it, is, is being removed and you're leasing additional space?
Yes. There was additional space needed for record storage on the first floor and that's the additional space that we're now leasing. And again, that was at the request of the state provo-, uh, probation department.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, can you remove my motion for this, for this resolution?
Yes. Commissioner Johnson? I have, uh, a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
No.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions seventeen through twenty-two, which are memorials and commendations. Please read them into the record at a later date.
Mr. President, there was one late addition, so it's through twenty-three.
Through twenty-three, okay. Thank you for that correction. Mr. Palavecchio, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners? Questions or comments? Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take Resolutions seventeen through twenty-three as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper? Absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Mr. President, can you record me as a yes vote, please?
Absolutely. Madam Clerk?
Yeah, so noted.
Madam Clerk, do we have any added stars?
Uh, Mr. President, we have none.
Thank you. Let's move to Report of Board Committees. Commissioners, do we have any Report of Board Committees? Any legislative reports? Written communications? Any unfinished business? New business? Okay. Madam Clerk, let's move to public comments. Those are the public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. They also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, um, this, this information is for the, uh, callers, uh, viewers. If you're interested in calling in, the number is eight five five seven five six seven five two zero and the password is seven one one three seven pound. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. Uh, and then this is for non-agenda items. Uh, so at this time, our public, uh, information officer, uh, will announce any callers in queue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chala Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. Uh, we have one caller. We have, uh, Whitney Stroop. Mr. Stroop, you have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
All right, um, am I audible now?
Yes, you are. You may begin.
All right, um, hi, Whitney Stroop from Newark, calling, um, as often is the case. Um, and I actually wanted to speak to the budget, uh, for twenty twenty-one. I'm extremely disappointed to see thirty-eight million dollars projected for, uh, continuing to hold ICE detainees. That's down slightly from last year's, um, actual take, it looks like, but not by much. Uh, you know, it really looks like the plan is to continue business as usual under the Biden administration and that's really, really disheartening considering the fairly evident community outpouring over the last several years against this contract that you have with ICE. Um, you know, it just looks like a real failure of democ- I'm sorry. Um, it, it looks like a real failure of democracy to me. And so I guess for the board, um, I, I guess as a question to throw out for the record, does this embody your sense of what democracy looks like in Essex County? Do you feel that it is actually, um, you know, reflective of our community values and the consensus of Essex County that you should continue to contract with ICE at a level that seems pretty equivalent to, um, you know, what you were doing under Trump with the new president, Joe Biden? Um, and then with the remaining time that I have, I would just like to request a meeting with President Richardson. I think you've gotten plenty of calls and emails and I think you've maybe responded to some, although I haven't heard back from you. Um, and this will be a meeting specifically with the abolish ICE New York-New Jersey Coalition, which is an umbrella group that's been operating in Hudson County, in Bergen County and in Essex County, working directly with people inside, um, as well as their families, working with lawyers, working with doctors, uh, and also activists. And I do feel, considering the importance of this issue, that, uh, that we do deserve, uh, a meeting to sit down with you and have a back and forth that these meetings don't seem to allow because nobody seems willing to actually engage with the public at these meetings. So anyway, in closing, um, So, anyway, in closing, um, you know, it's very disappointing to see you continuing this ICE profiteering, and I do hope, uh, that you might be open to ending that. And I hope that rates will be lower under Biden, but it looks like you're counting on that not being the case. Um, thank you.
And as our, as is our policy, all questions are answered in writing.
Mr. President?
Uh, I- Mr. McInerney? I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, hold on, Mr. McInerney. Madam Clerk?
I just, um, need to be sure if there are any additional, uh, callers in the queue.
We do have callers in the queue.
Okay.
Mr. McInerney, you need to say something?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. Uh, the number in the budget, um, and this can be included maybe in the response to this caller, uh, but the number in the budget includes a significant amount of revenue generated from the federal marshal's office, um, as well as a few other sources. But it, it's a very significant amount of that. It's not the majority of it, uh, but it is a significant amount. And, uh, I think for points of clarification, communication should include some break thirty-eight million. So, uh, people realize that that's not all ICE, uh, all ICE revenues. As a matter of fact, I think our ICE revenues are probably, uh, and population is extremely low. Had to some discussions yesterday with the, uh, with the administration, uh, kind of preparing for this. So, uh, I, I just wanted to make that point, that the thirty-eight million is not all ICE.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney.
Would you like us to continue with the calls?
Absolutely.
Uh, uh, Chalo Malumbo, please con- continue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we have another caller. Uh, the last four digits of your number are four-eight-seven-four. Uh, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Gwendolyn Franklin. I'm calling in reference to, um, the county at the address three-twenty University Avenue. Um, I'm an employee. I just returned after being out sick for almost a year. And my question is that they were doing testing when I came, um, I, when I came back, and they said they are not, no longer doing testing for COVID. And I want to know why would they stop testing for COVID? And the other questions I have is, especially since there is a new strain that is more contagious and more harmful. The last testing that they did on February ninth, um, nine people were, um, positive. And how do we know we came in contact with these people? I'm sure they had to ride the elevator. I'm sure they had to take the staircase up. And the other thing is, why, since we, we are mandatory to work five days a week, I happen to be in that department, why are we not able to receive the shot to protect us from getting COVID? You know, I don't mind working, but I don't want to die to work. And I think that's really wrong to ask us to come in five days a week. People are constantly contracting this COVID virus, and we are susceptible to rece- to getting it, and we may be, you know, gone. And I think that's something that you should ask an employee to do, and you're not even trying to even give them the shot to save their lives. That's my question. If someone can ask, answer that, I would love it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, a- as is customary, we will answer your questions in writing. But someone will correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think the county stopped testing, uh, folks for COVID-19. So, I don't know where, you may have heard that, but I'm fairly certain that testing is ongoing. Uh, uh, Ms. Jackson, can you help me here?
Ms. Gassion?
Courtney Gassion Essex County Council, you are correct, Mr. President. Um, the county has continued to do its community-based, uh, testing three days a week, um, in various locations throughout the county. I think what Ms. Franklin may have been speaking to is, um, mandatory employee testing, which we have implemented at various departments throughout the county based on, um, noted outbreaks by our county health department. So, uh, DFAB was being tested on a, uh, rotating basis, uh, first every two weeks and then every thirty days, based on the recommendation of our county health officer. And in fact, that testing just took place, I believe it was last week. Um, so the most recent one, so that, it has not, it has not been discontinued at DFAB. Um, I think the last scheduled date was last week. If further outbreaks occur, based on that county health officer's recommendation, that protocol will continue, but that we are following the protocol of the county, um, health officer and her recommendations for outbreak testing of employees. But certainly, community-based testing is available to all county residents or county employees, should they choose to utilize it.
Thank you. Now, in terms of testing, you have to fit certain criteria, correct?
Testing or vaccine?
I mean, the vaccines.
Yeah. So, um, on that point, Mr. President, that is accurate. Um, we have to abide by the, the State Department of Health guidelines as to who is eligible to receive the vaccine. Um, right now, we are actually still in expanded Phase One A. Um, that has yet to include all essential workers. Um, so that would be the DFAB employees. So, unless you fall into one of the other categories, which would be first responders, a healthcare worker over the age of sixty-five, or somebody who is under the age of sixty-five with an underlying health con- condition, a comorbidity, um, then you would not yet be qualified in the state of New Jersey. So, the, the county is only able, at this point in time, at its five vaccination sites, to vaccinate those residents.
Thank you, Ms. Gassion. I just thought that this particular information around COVID testing and COVID vaccinations is too important to, for anyone to wait for a letter in the mail. So, that needed to, in my opinion, be addressed right now. Thank you. Mr. Chal- Chalo, any, Mr. Malumba, any other people waiting to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Okay, Mr. President, I do have some written, um, correspondence, and I will read them at this time.
Thank you.
Um, the first one is from Jim Price of Montclair, New Jersey. To the Commissioners, on Monday, February the ninth, ICE deported seventy-two, seventy-two people to Haiti, including over twenty children, among them a two-month-old. The flight was in violation of Biden's directive that imposed a hundred-day moratorium on deportations. The moratorium was subsequently modified to allow for the deportation of terrorists and convicted viol- violent felons. So, a question for the commis-, for Commissioner Sebel or any other commissioner who cares to answer. What category does the two-month-old fall into? A terrorist, terrorist, B killer, C rapist, D drug mule? Sincerely, Jim Price. The next, um, email was, is from Emmy, Emily Liu, no address given, attorney. Hello, my name is Emily Liu. I am calling to congratulate President Richardson on being elected to head the Commissioners and to demand that he pick up where President Gill left off by calling for an end to the ICE contract and the release of people held in ICE detention at SS County Correctional Facility. Following a hunger strike, the community knows that President Richardson assisted conditions inside ECCF were fantastic after the infamous Department of Homeland Security inspection of July 2018 revealed its atrocious conditions. And under the COVID pandemic, things have taken a turn for the deadly. People in ICE detention put their bodies on the line by hunger striking to demand their release. One hunger striker said that before being detained at SS, "I've never experienced a suffering, the pain and the agony that is to be locked up there. All the humiliations, all the torture that one goes through in that place, it's unbelievable. It's awful." The strike only ended because of retaliation and threats by jail staff and ICE, not because their demands were met. It's a new year, time for change, so I, so can I get a written response from President Richardson as to what he plans to do about the situation? The next comment was submitted by J. Andrew Smith, no address given. This largely concerns D-CAM bus lines, which serves SS County, and who's commute is the reason many people, including me, moved here. In the wake of D-CAM's indefinite shutdown with Coach and NJT's cross honoring, and also, of course, COVID-19, the subject of community commuting certainly has our attention. Therefore, I write you to ask that you support the reintroduction and the ultimate passage of state senate bill, S. twenty-five-twenty-nine, which establishes a commuter bill of rights and a advocate's office for complaints about private bus complies, companies. It was introduced in 2016, but died in committee, both pre and post D-CAM, both bus lines. We've always needed it. Yes, I definitely posted and commented and replied and otherwise written a great deal about now regarding many issues with D-CAM. Yes, I'm the guy that put together the, uh, April 2014 public forum, which WBMA TV has still posted online. But I'm clearly neither alone nor recent. A quick look at D-CAM's Facebook page reviews, of which I contribute, only one shows a score of one-point-five out of five stars and many more disparaging comments. Also, a quick look at D-CAM's main line of communication at D-CAM Bus Lines on Twitter shows largely negative replies to practically their every tweet, which may explain why they send so few, especially when most need it. For the record, I haven't always hated them. I started riding D-CAM in the early nineties, and my first regular driver was none other than the legend, the man, the myth, the icon, Mr. High on Oregano Rubbery Duckie Man himself, the late Sal, uh, Sciano. But ever since his retirement and passing, D-CAM has sadly gone downhill, and now it comes to this. A showdown notice may still, uh, still regard as permanent, clumsy, and very partial takeover by Coach and cross honoring, honoring by Coach and New Jersey Transit. For decades, we rioters have put up with D-CAM all the service from so many elite and misses buses to rude drivers to dispatchers, complete lack of communication, to far the worst handling of major events like train power outages, map, major traffic accidents, heavy rains with floods, et cetera, all private bus companies in New York, New Jersey. We deserve better, far better, because I'm sure I'm not the only one who chose, who choose to settle in some SS County town along the D-CAM route, largely because of that route. And I think a company with six generations of history would be better, too. But it's simply not. It doesn't even meet a common sense minimal requirements. But the fact that it's, it, but the fact is, such requirements were memorialized and introduced into the New Jersey State Senate, S. twenty-five-twenty-nine, which again died in committee. However, I've recently written to Senator Ronald Rice, Assemblyman Ralph Caputo, Assemblywoman Cleo Tucker, to reinduce it. So, I'm calling on you, dear readers, to help me sup- to help me support reintroduction and passage of this bill. Other bus companies like Academy have received many complaints and negative reviews. D-CAM may be the worst, but it's hardly alone. And a decent commute is why most of us live in SS County. It keeps our property values up, and it eliminates a need to live in New York City to work there. The final comment, it was submitted by James E. Harris of Montclair, New Jersey. I respectfully request written responses for the following. One, please provide me with three most recent reports for the Office of Equal Opportunity and Affirmative Action. I'm interested in reports that contain information about the race, ethnicity, and the gender of all employees for all departments by job categories for the last three years. Two, what is the status of the policy that required general contractors to provide bonding coverage for subcontractors that are minority women and small business enterprises? This law was approved unanimously by the Board of Freeholders during the presidency of former freeholder Brittany Timberlake. Three, please provide me with members of the Affirmative Action Committee and the dates and times of this committee's meeting. Four, who, by name and contact information, is responsible for checking to determine if companies that are employed by SS County comply with all affirmative act equal opportunity provisions that are required in the contract award documents? Five, what is the reasonable timeframe for SS County Commissioner and county employees to respond to telephone calls and other correspondence? Six, provide me with a complete budget for 2021. Thank you in advance for your anticipated positive and prompt reply. Sincerely, James E. Harris. Mr. President, that completes all-
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Through, uh, sorry, Madam Clerk. We do have another caller on the line who called while you were reading the emails.
Okay.
I will put him through now. Uh, I'm sorry, I, uh, all I have is, the, the number is eight-one-six-one. Um, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Carrie Murphy. Um, I was calling about the budget, um, the thirty-eight million dollars. I heard that there was clarification, um, by one of the commissioners regarding, um, that some of that money was federal marshals, and that needs to be explained further. But it's thirty-eight million dollars of tax money. Um, you know, I'm not really caring exactly, like, where it's coming from. The, the tax money, they're, they're not going into the jails. I, I requested, I had a specific question about how many people died in the Essex County Jail a few months back, and I finally got a response. It was a partial, a partial response. But the response was that nine people died in your jail, um, for specific years that you decided to give me an answer to. Um, so, like, people are dying in the jail, so where's the money going? Because it's not going to support the people in the jail. Whether it's ICE money, federal marshal money, that, those monies are supposed to provide support for everyone in your jail. People are dying in there. So, you're not doing your job. So, if the money clearly isn't going into the jail, where's the money going? That's, that's our tax dollars. Those are our tax dollars. And, and, and you guys are also getting, the jail vendors give you commission money. How much commission money have you collected over the years? Where's that money going? So, you, the commissioners, have a fiduciary duty to, to tell us taxpayers where the monies are going, and, and you're not doing that. You're not doing that, and I want to know why. And, and number two, I mean, we have so many calls again and again over this, that people in that jail, whether they're detainees or citizen inmates, you're, you're violating their human rights. No one in that jail has a death sentence. So, I would like clarification about where my tax dollar monies are going, and I want to know why you think it's okay to violate the human rights of people in that jail? Why you're allowing death to occur? Why are you not doing anything with this, with these, the COVID outbreaks?
You have thirty seconds, Mr. McInerney. Thirty seconds.
Apparently, you're not doing it either for your employees. There is an employee that called in talking about, "I'm scared to go to work." So, what are you guys doing? Thank you for your time.
As always, um, all questions will be answered in writing. Uh, Mr. President, that completes our public comments session.
And thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner, uh, comment session. Any comments from the Commissioners?
Mr. President, I just have one. Uh, just a reminder that tomorrow is the, uh, weekly food distribution program. It got a little bit off track because of the snow. It'll be held in Bloomfield at the, behind the public library. There's a municipal lot. It starts at about nine, and it goes while supplies last. So, I encourage anyone to share the information and, or join. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Anyone else? Any other Commissioner? Hearing that, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have, so moved. Take care, everyone. Stay safe.
All right, everybody. Be careful and stay safe. See you next week. See you next week.